All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order and the first order of business is our student representative report. I'd like to welcome our new student reps. Who's gonna go first?
Um, I think you're first.
Okay, go for it.
Don't be on my hearing, I have this talk.
Uh, yeah, there's a mic on your table, so they'll pick it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to pick it up or anything.
Um, our football team won our first game of the season this year after having a long losing streak in two past few years, we had not won any games. And this year we just touched down after touchdown after touchdown as a good game for our team. Cause they've been putting in hard work all summer long, practicing every day and Coach Holtman working on the barn. It's good to see them winning. So they did great that last game.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Hey, Alvin.
Uh, and on first day back, we did a spirit rotation. Uh, we introduced our new S R L officer and the new A M B officers. Uh, we also taught our school spare chance to incoming freshmen and gave our freshman terms training students. Um, towards the end, we just broke out into groups, we socialized, we did some icebreakers. And each grade level played a game of bingo and the front row ended in winning and it was just a great start to the school year.
Awesome.
Um, we did some other activities for the grade levels. Um, we worked on like what some distractions could be and like lowering stress during the school year. Um, some other activity we did, we, the students would pick a color that they liked or like a superpower they would wanna have. And then explain why they wanted to do that. And the students really liked that because they could get up and not really be talked at, they could interact.
Awesome. Great, any questions?
So how did you feel like first days went so far?
They've been going really good.
Right.
Did you all coordinate your report tonight? Cause you did an off, that was the best first report we've ever gotten. Good job. Very good work. All right, and um, so I was just looking at the agenda, you know, whenever there's stuff, especially stuff that we're talking about that directly impacts students. We'll definitely wanna, you know, get your input on that and, you know, you can't vote, but you can vote with your opinion on stuff and so um, I'll count on you guys and, and my fellow board members to just remind me. Um, you know, sometimes they'll say, hey, can we hear from our students on this? Or if you have a question, don't be shy to raise your hand. Um, we wanna hear from you and incorporate their thoughts and, and uh, questions into the discussion. So just keep that in mind, but yeah.
And warning, the cell phone policy is coming up.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that one.
So I'd love to hear your input on that one after.
Yes, but you have a couple of weeks to think about it. Yeah, okay, great. Uh, next is accentuate positive.
Good evening, board. My name is Shawna Schlaaf, principal here at Phoenix Elementary. I just wanna say welcome to the students and welcome to our new school board member. Um, my name, um, I'm the principal here at Phoenix Elementary and it's been a really amazing start to the school year. In fact, it feels like we never left. It almost feels like it's May. Um, we have, our staff is consistent. Uh, we had a really clear, fun, full focused in-service week where our teachers, when it was time to learn, they were learning. And when it's time to prep our building for our family engagement event last Thursday, it was, we all hands on deck. It was a really, really great week. Um, and I just think we have an incredible crew. So I'm so grateful for all of them and their hard work. Um, preparing for the start of a wonderful year. I do have a few shout outs that I'd like to say first and foremost, I wanna give a shout out to Lori Delgado and Wendy Duffy for helping with, or for running the front office and registration is a beast. Every, every student has 11 forms and there's a bazillion clicks to make sure everything happens and they've done a phenomenal job. Happy to report that we are up in our enrollment and that's wonderful. Uh, that being said, our second shout out is to our kinder teachers. We have pretty high class of, I mean, we have a really strong uh, class sizes for our kinders and we did all, or they did all these home visits, making sure to connect with families and making sure students felt welcome on the first day and really safe. Uh, along with that, they also volunteered to help during in-service by modeling some lessons during, for their peers. And so just wanna give a shout out to Marla, Dintino, and Jennifer Hawkins for just really being amazing. Another shout out I wanna give is to our maintenance and our custodial crew. There's a lot of responsiveness happening at the beginning of the year where we're moving desks and moving classrooms and getting the, the billing um, presentable for everybody. So I just wanna give a shout out to Malcolm and our new custodians. I kind of actually went to school here. I did a raise of hands at the beginning of the year and we have six staff members who actually went to school here at Phoenix Elementary.
Wow.
The Tully. But we're ready for a really great year and I could talk all day, so I'm just gonna leave it at that and get it on a virtual.
Hey Shawna, good evening, everyone. Kent Alair in Burt's Bulletwater Hill Elementary. Uh, Shawna stole a little of my thunder, but uh, in Phoenix Town, I've served K through five, six through eight, and nine through 12. And while there are no uh, kinda easy jobs that don't require much expertise, I can tell you as a kindergarten teacher, to get all those five-year-olds into your classroom and starting doing something together is amazing. So Sarah Price and uh, Ellen Anding are two of the very best. I just wanted to give them credit tonight. Uh, our special ed teachers who are helping kids that have some specific needs at Orchard Hill. It, it's amazing. Today's day three and they're in there doing their thing. Uh, so I wanted to thank them. Um, also uh, last year and this year, one, one thing that an elementary principal loves is a great P T A president. And then what he loved more is a great P T A president. He does for two year. Uh, we're lucky to have Brad Nelson, uh, again, as our P T A president and he worked closely with Sarah Aimstrom and Katie McCormick. Uh, they did a, a great um, welcome back party for our staff uh, first week back and it was just a really fun working with Brad. So I wanted to recognize him tonight. Lastly, I know the P T R A had a 25% turnover in its staff this last year. And I was just thinking like, Orchard Hill's not that big of a school. We have 17 licensed like classroom teachers and four turned over. Um, and so I was worried about, that's 23%. I was a little bit worried about that because it can change culture. Um, but wow, we hired some excellent people. Uh, Nina Barreno, Magnolia Engelhardt, um, Beth Maven and Tyler Santi. And it is, it is amazing. They're great people. And I'm just kinda reminded, uh, encouraged all through the year, Brent would say, good people wanna come to Phoenix Town. And it's, it's really showing at Orchard Hill. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Mr. Santi?
Lord, good to see everybody again. You're in Santi, Phoenix Town Rising Academy. Just a couple of things. First of all, um, we completed our intake meetings with all of our new families and welcome back meetings with our returning families this week. These meetings uh, set out kind of our expectation for students and, and the families and try to set them up for success throughout the year. So it was great to see all of our returning families coming back and to meet with new kids. Uh, and then uh, from the district assessment side, um, our E L O staff at every school are currently busy uh, working on uh, help us screen assessments. This is the assessment that determines whether a student needs additional language support and if so, what the level. And so I wanna thank all those uh, uh, E L support staff at every school for getting right on that and getting our kids right into the services that they need right away. So that's it for me.
Good evening, board. I'm a proud principal. Over town in other places. Um, that's what my colleagues are saying too, but the beginning of the year is so fun. Um, and you know, picking it off with an in-service that was uh, deeply meaningful and really focused. I just wanna um, especially call out thanks to Javier for his leadership and Corinne Calhoun and Jamar Boyd. They're really, um, those are in-house experts and they really designed some phenomenal PD that got a lot of kudos from our staff. You know, and we were cr- crunched for time during that week to make sure that every moment they have with PD training, so this is gonna be awesome. So thanks to you, Havi, and thanks to Corinne and Jamar. Um, I also wanna, of course, note Cheryl in my office. Cheryl Joseph, our office manager, has been um, kinda playing uh, double duty right now. Uh, Alma suffered a loss in her family, so it's been kind of a rough start for her, Alma. So then, you know, but we do step in and help each other out. So Cheryl's just been working countless hours to do all those crazy forms for registration to ensure all the teachers have all this supply. So Cheryl Joseph, thanks to her. Um, also, I did wanna um, appreciate uh, Tiffany, Dawn, and Brent for your advocacy for inclusion. Like, it's not easy work, you know, and in what an impactful in-service moment that was. And you know, and to really all of our staff go lean into it and they're like, okay, we're doing it. Like, this is a lot of work, but we really, it's the cause and everybody understands it. So thank you for leading that charge. Um, and then last but not least, I also have a kinder story, cause kindergarten's fun. They're the babies. Um, and uh, what I love most about kindergarten, aside from saintly people that work in those classrooms, um, it's really that fresh look on it. Um, a school and a culture within a school, cause they don't know. Most of them haven't been with us, you know, unless they have a sibling. And so like, that opportunity to look at things through somebody else's eyes for the first time is just a gift and I got to meet with a family today. Um, kiddos like never been in school and just like, you know, they're a horse and pure life. And so, you know, just chat. Uh, but they were just so gracious and they said, you know, like, we're so sorry. And I'm like, oh, they're fine, but we get it. Uh, but they said, they were telling me a story about like, the culture here is amazing and just really reflecting back about what it means to be in this district and what it means to serve and what it means to be a good human, especially they were sharing this story. They're like, I've never seen this before. I've never felt this before. We can tell that the culture here is vibrant and caring. And they were saying that like, even in the cafeteria, bigger kids are saying to the new kids, are you new here? What can I do at home? And it's just such a, you know, breadth of like, oh yeah. It's important we're dealing with all of this stuff, you know, that sometimes it's, it's hard to pause and be like, oh yeah, it's the good stuff. So I just wanted to share that sweet little story. You, so.
Hello, everybody. I am a proud principal as well. Yeah, I, I feel like a great start um, to our uh, you know, in-service week and then having kids back. Uh, I love having the kids there. It's definitely like, you know, why we do what we do. So I was happy to have them back. Um, special shout out to Bree Bates, Liz Fletcher, and our web leaders. I know I've talked a lot about web. Uh, we have forty-two new web leaders this year. Um, and I, we have a lot of new sixth graders, which is awesome. Uh, but there were so many new to our building that uh, it's funny being in the elementary principal side and remember the tears from kinder and all that, but we had a lot of sixth graders with tears this year. Um, and our web leaders, uh, yeah, just how they showed up, got on their level, um, and just like creating that positive foundation. Um, and it's just something that like the amount of work that is and we do to make that possible and create that environment to create these leaders, um, is really transformative for our school. So it's great for them. Um, shout out to Sandra Tringlo in our yearbook class. So today, Johnston's, um, Johnson's rep that uh, works with our yearbook class was there and our yearbook was awarded gold level of excellence for the third consecutive year. Now, we were specifically recognized for outstanding cover, which what, and I was there for this. The Johnston's rep said that they print over ten million yearbooks per year and that only five percent of the schools nationwide receiving recognition at that level. Uh, yeah. With me, cause I, so I went to the yearbook class today and we like presented the um, plaque and one of the students is an eighth grader now, but he was the one that designed the kind of yearbook um, cover and what got picked. And so, and his, just like, I never thought that like, I'd get chosen for something like that. It was very sweet. Um, so I have a lot of pictures for that that I wanna share out. Um, so that was a cool thing today. And I just wanna shout out our new staff. Um, I love not being new staff this year. So, uh, Heidi Ryan, Carrie Hart, Bryce McCall, as soon as he gets, Adrian Lamar, Kelly Case, Kevin Wangler, Joey Brady, and Jose Veloz. Not gonna be the percentage of how new staff we have. Um, but yeah, I think, you know, a big part of, uh, I was like, one of the most important part, I think, of a principal's role is getting good people and good humans. Um, and just excited about um, their energy and their presence um, to our school. And then, lastly, I just wanted to end um, with uh, we did this activity with our staff during in-service and it's something that like, I return to a lot, uh, which is the theme of hope. Um, and there's like more and more research coming out on the actual impact of hope and like you can get hope scores. Um, and uh, with kids, with adults and all that, and the reality of depending on your hope score, really how successful as a human we will be. Um, and so I think just, we have an opportunity to grow hope in our kids, to grow hope in our community. Uh, and it's hard at times, but also like amazing. Um, and so I had our staff answer the question, what is your hope for our students? And I have them just kind of like, I always say, I like my hope walls in my office right now. Um, but uh, one of them was just, I hope students know that they're capable of doing hard things, that they belong, that they're loved, and that they feel safe. Um, and I think at the core of what we do, obviously, like, there's so much growth that I wanna hit on, like with our academics and all those things, but feeling capable of doing hard things. I think that's especially um, with those awesome mental scores and confidence to make mistakes and be okay with that. So um, just wanting to like continue that theme throughout this year of just building hope for each other and our kids. So, thank you.
I'm behind you. I have.
Yeah, but are you proud, Kelly?
I'm proud of you.
Hi, Harold.
Oh, sorry, Nancy, did you have a question for Shacey?
We did. I was just gonna ask if we can um, remember to share any sort of evidence. Some student representatives are new and also if we have um, folks, we have a brand new board member as well, but if we really want to be more inclusive and thoughtful of the folks that might listen to this. If they're here today, wonderful, but if they hear this later, then that they can kind of follow up. If you can show what web is.
Yes, I know. No, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you for that. Um, so web stands for where everyone belongs. And so it's for uh, really building up eighth grade leaders to support our sixth graders. And so all of our sixth graders have a web leader that's assigned to them throughout the year. Uh, that they can go to. Uh, right now, it's big on this locker. No, those kids are anxious about that lock. So getting that open, but really it's just uh, kind of that theme of just where everyone belongs. That's what web stands for.
Thank you so much.
No, thank.
All right. Good evening, board. Helen Cross, proud principal of Phoenix High School. Um, I'm going to echo a lot of what my wonderful colleagues have already said. I wanted to start by accentuating a positive in-service week. Um, I really felt like it was very focused. Um, and although shorter than other in-service weeks in the past, excuse me, uh, we were able to use that time just really diligently and focused. So we at P H S focused on our special populations and I wanted to shout out to Anna Redding, who was able to share some applicable strategies for staying organized in how we serve, especially like our federally protected groups. And really making something that can seem very overwhelming, um, very easy and organized. And um, so teachers could start the year feeling like they had a good idea of what students they needed to serve, uh, specifically with certain modifications, accommodations, et cetera. Um, also to um, our teachers and staff members who are case managers for those groups. So Rebecca Gerber and Mimi Terrelli are 504 coordinators. They are also um, special education teachers and case managers along with Sophie Gordon Williams, Kelly Seaborg, and Megan Samlin. Also, Brandon Williams, who's our tech coordinator, and Carrie Miller, who is our E L B teacher, all gave presentations on strategies and best practices for all of our students, but especially the, um, those in groups. And again, it's really felt like we were able to start the year feeling really on top of things and rethinking our classrooms so that we're serving all students with those best strategies. And also our instructional leadership team members who are really shaping the trajectory of teaching and learning at P H S. Scotty Stulp, Kelly Fogg-Johnson, Carol Lee Campbell, Anna Redding, and John Thering all got together for us to figure out what our next best steps are as far as how are we teaching standards? How are we making sure that every minute in our classroom is counting for our students? Not just doing projects that we love, but projects that are also making sure our students are ready for next steps, diploma, state tests, et cetera. So some very focused time around that. Um, our first day was um, different, but fun. Um, I wanna shout out to our um, student leaders, many who are sitting here, but especially our seniors and A S B officers who were asked last minute by me to lead a spirit kind of mini rally at our rotations and they did an amazing job. Um, really just representing pirates well, showing people what legacy looks like. We also had a couple of other sessions who were hosted by our grad coaches, Skylar Lyons and Alejandro Alacca, who were talking to students about what we call it like graduation guard, but really like what goals they can reach for for graduation. So they talked about cords and tassels and all sorts of different things. And what that looks like. Jordan Ruiz, one of our counseling crew members, talking about um, how you can show up as your best self and our reps kind of talked a little bit about one of those activities. And also Erica Ochoa and Anna Garcia gave some really riveting presentations on just how we do things and how we interact with each other at P H S. So I just wanna shout out to them. Uh, each session was forty-seven minutes. That's a lot of time in a rotation. We're working on that, but they did awesome. Um, another play positive, just in general, is just onboarding students and families. I don't know if you know this, but we have a new registrar. Her name is Jess Marsh. And she is doing a phenomenal job of just making sure that every family is getting a call back, every situation is being tended to with care. Um, and I just really appreciate, appreciate her attention to detail. And our counseling group are meeting and onboarding new students to our district. So Tammy Ingerson, Michelle Carlson, and Helica Mendoza and Jordan Ruiz just really chipping away at a long list of of students and families who wanna be part of Phoenix Talent. Um, and doing that was with kindness and care. Last but not least, we have a couple of new staff members and I just wanna shout out to H R for doing a great job onboarding our staff. Really felt um, at the end of their first day, like they knew how to navigate things, they knew who the go-to people were. And not only H R, but just the Phoenix High School staff is so welcoming that our new staff members really felt like they could ask anybody questions, that if they didn't know something, the invitation was genuine, that they could ask and um, that it would be okay. So I know that was a lot, but thank you everyone for just a great start. Amy.
Oh. Hi, everyone. Kelly Soder, um, community care and I promise. I stole it. Um, community care and early learning. I'd love to accentuate a couple of things across the gamut. I know y'all have heard this already, but um, we hosted, co-hosted with Jackson Care Connect the Help You Start Block Party, which feels like a while ago, but it was August twenty-third. Nearly a thousand families from this meeting came through. We got our, our attendance and numbers. It was just outstanding. Like, I just wanna give a million kudos to Katie McCormick and Nubia Caneda. They spent tons of time during the summer. Katie is an organization, just like, her brain is just works that way. And she did a wonderful job. We had over seventy vendors, kids' activities, all kinds of volunteers through this volunteer network with Jackson Care Connect. Services right there, medical appointments, eye exams, um, dental exams. The clinic was open. I'm just beautiful. Um, also want to um, shout out our, our team on continuing to work on Medicaid claiming. Um, all said and done, we received ninety, over ninety thousand dollars in reimbursement last year with Medicaid claiming in our, in our little teeny tiny experiment. And we feel like that is huge value for us for all kinds of reasons. And um, we're onboarding more folks this year and really grateful for, for people that have a lot of things on their plates and are still embracing this opportunity to participate Medicaid claiming because every person that participates brings more money back to our district, which is services and people. So thank you um, to everyone that's helping support that. And then I'll shift to um, the Early Learning Center here too. We are so excited. I just, I, I couldn't even, the, the smoothness of, of the visitor is outstanding. We just had an open house with families. Um, excited to be here, just really, really, really ready for another year. Please come visit anytime. Um, pirate ship is a huge hit. We had a few people drop in, open house, four to six, stayed the whole time. And um, pirate ship and all of the, the features we have this year are a huge hit. Um, and, and I think I shared this already, um, we have our staff, which are mostly returning, Rosario Medina. And um, Jessica Lucio is a new addition, although she has been doing facility work for us. She's outstanding. Um, an outstanding addition. Dana Morales, who was with us last year, but didn't start at the beginning of the year and I should have introduced her in, in August. Uh, Bernice Munoz is our other teacher and um, we just started onboarding our fifth person today. We have one staff turnover and Heather Rakes will be joining us as a well-experienced, ten years in child parent early learning, joining us and she'll be starting tomorrow. And so, just one final thing on that. Um, we, Erica Ochoa brought the idea forth with um, immigrant and refugee grant last year around interpretation and translation devices for, for anyone in our district. And we happen to have staff members that are Spanish only and very limited English. And this whole transition, the last two weeks with professional learning, we have been able to provide that in the language of choice for our staff. And it has been an absolute game changer to be able to provide that with the intent to support our newcomer students, but equally so with our stu-, our staff. And it's just been an awesome opportunity for us to provide that to somebody that might otherwise really struggle to be following along. It's just totally awesome. So thank you for that purchase. Thank you for that investment and thank you to Erica for bringing it to us. That's it for me.
Yes.
And Medicare, can you answer a question about Medicare?
Kelly, your question.
Yes. The Medicare claiming, explain a little bit more about that.
Uh, we started participating last year in Medicaid administrative claiming for schools. So it is a variety of services, sort of like speaking about coordination, recruitment, um, enhancement of service, um, information, anything that uh, provides information and helps connect a student or family to Medicaid eligible services. We don't actually have to track whether or not a student or family was Medicaid eligible. We don't have to, to track even if they followed through on, on the flyer we gave them, telling them about our health clinics, for example. Um, we, we are, we're, we're able to kind of track that in a variety of different codes. And it's not very, it, it's not nearly as labor intense as we, when we think about billing or Medicaid and insurance. It's not nearly as intense in that. We're not doing direct service billing. We don't have to keep track of student names. We, we share that and we don't share any um, specific student level data. Uh, so for example, when we're talking about our health centers on campus and for maybe reviewing usage, um, that kind of a, that kind of an analysis is something that we could claim more time for. Is that interesting?
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Montier with Food Service. And like everyone, I'm sure we're just excited getting back into the new school year. Got a few new employees, Autumn Sanger and Jamie Hayden, that have joined our team and a few other internal employees that have moved around, shifted with promotions. Just all people getting really excited for our changes that we have upcoming here. And my biggest honor to introduce and present who is here that's gonna help with some of these changes is my new chef here, Brian Sweet, is joining our. So hopefully everybody gets a chance to continue to meet him. I know he's really excited about some of these new changes that we're gonna do. He's, he's ready to hit the ground running with some more local scratch cooking and training onsite in the different kitchens. I also have to give a shout out to our lunch aids. You know, the start of the year is always crazy and lunchroom is probably one of the ones that's always crazy every year, but then topped it with all of our changes this year. So I mean, we couldn't do it without all the extra support in those kitchens um, as we go through these changes. So I just, I, I really wanna give a shout out to all of them in those kitchens helping us with those changes. And then finally, I just have to leave you guys with some exciting news. We are bringing back our F F V P, fresh fruit and vegetable program in the elementaries and that'll start September twenty-second. And we look forward to interpreting the regulations and maybe making some changes in it. Thank you.
So. Then all the positives, anything from the board?
I'll try to reverse a little bit. The start of a new year is exciting and it's fun and all that, but it's also a lot of work. And uh, I saw it in evidence last night. I went to a meeting in Talent Elementary School, but not, nothing to do with the school. And Heather Lowe was sitting there and her death slaving away. And, and you know, this is still a clock at night, then she was still going. So anyway, I wanted to recognize that. And also Lincoln, thanks for bringing up the football game. Yeah, thirty-five to nine, it was really overtime. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Please.
Um, we talk about inclusion and belonging and I love those conversations. Um, and I'm really grateful to have had, to have had um, Talent Elementary pop up and their welcome message, be by legal. They're so, so, so lovely. I do speak English, obviously, and I also speak Spanish, but it just does something different when somebody can provide something without somebody having to ask for it over and over and over. I'm really grateful that somebody mentioned that there's interpretation devices. My hope, um, I ask for this every year, but my hope is that at every meeting, that it's just My hope, I ask for this every year, but my hope is that at every meeting, that it's just accessible and people just have it without people having to ask for it. I know that we have that at high school graduation. I'm not sure if it happens from fifth grade graduation or not graduation, transition, I don't even know what we call it anymore. But from to middle school, middle school to high school, my hope is that we continue to do that. And it's gonna be messy and it feels kind of awkward. It's like, how do we do it? I will extend myself again. I I use those devices. I'm happy to coach people to help support just language accessibility, not just Spanish, but any other language, especially like sign language we have. I love that we have grandparents and folks that might have limited hearing that sign language is super nice for them to be able to just participate in here. So my hope is that we can continue to increase our language accessibility, not just randomly here and there. We're practicing, we're getting better, there's opportunity for growth, but that we continue to do it in a more consistent and thoughtful way. But huge kudos to Talent Elementary for doing that. It was just really beautiful, like, oh, it's not even just transcribed. Somebody's actually saying this. And it was really, really nice. So thank you.
That was Joe, who's helping you with that.
I have two things. I was able to attend the block party. You forgot the haircut part. I didn't hear you say that. But I was, I was really grateful for many things as our outpouring of our community that came to that event. It was hard to find parking. It was well attended and we had a beautiful place in the high school to have that function and every piece of that was used and then it had to be turned around quickly for another event right after that. So kudos to the custodians that had to do that for you know, the opening, whatever Monday, we were doing Monday. But I just felt like, wow, healthcare, immunizations, all the things that were available there that maybe someone didn't find in community or or didn't know where to go to. I thought that was huge. A huge difference from the year before at Phoenix Elementary versus what happened over there. It was really wonderful to see that. I didn't know about it before, but I see that each elementary school had a Thursday night like introduction. I was just curious if we could hear feedback, like, how is that? I think, I think Brett, Brett and I had our quarterly meeting today and he asked me, what are you looking forward to? And I shared what I was, but I think what I'm really looking forward to is seeing how we can increase our community engagement every year. I hope we level up for that. But I'm wondering how well that was attended or how we let people know about it when it's not even near the first day of school. So I don't know if you could just say a couple of words about that or even where the mic is right now.
This is many things to Joe. He has been pushing that on the socials. You know, my video has some tweets about that. Everybody, the teachers were directed in us to invite families to the Thursday night event. And you know, the purpose is to really orient them to communication plan, the importance of attendance. You know, what are the major learning targets for the year, just to get them in the hole. I know for my school, I will say that the rooms were packed. I don't have a percentage, but they were like, all of our teachers were even like, wow, that was the most highest attendance ever. So and I walked into one of our four, five classes and I was like, holy cow, this is a, this is where the party's at. Like, they're standing there, you could barely fit in there. So I was getting out from talent's perspective.
We have about three hundred students and families of two hundred and sixty nine. Eighty three point five two percent.
Such a good.
But it was really, really good. Very, very determined. I'm sorry.
Everybody pull out your cameras.
You can round out tonight if you want.
Oh, I do want to thank our staff because it is really difficult to have in-service all week. And get your room ready because you're having company. The stress of getting ready for Tuesday when kids come. So they did a great job and the flight staff decorated and it was a fabulous event.
One thing I'll say about that too is that the reason why we went to an evening family event is that we we repurposed our conference day that used to be the day where families came in and just dropped off their their supplies, but their teacher, but we've all have made that an instruction day and then an effort to increase our instructional minutes and then did an evening event as a family welcoming event with no participants and intention around creating community and all of the things that lead to the list day. But yeah, it's probably one of our biggest events that people attend because they're really wanting to see their classroom. They're really good with their teachers. So it was, it was really positive energy all around. So sorry you guys didn't know about it.
No, I knew, well, I saw it, but I was, yeah, I think we were up on a hill somewhere in Jacksonville.
A parent standpoint, as I attended at Talon Elementary School for my daughter's class. I was there with a ton of families. There was nowhere to park. I have a very large parking, parking lot, but yeah, I think we got emails, we got text messages, it was on social media. We had a lot of time to prepare for this coming up as a parent.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
All right, very good. Well, thank you all so much. There's something special about the first meeting after school starts and I'm just really overwhelmed with gratitude for all of you and the hard work that you're doing in our schools and in our staffs too. I I reached out to a lot of you individually and I've heard nothing but really positive things about the start of the year and it's really awesome to hear. So thank you for all those late nights. I know you're not the only one. I'm sure it's had those late nights, Heather. And we urge you to take good care of yourself too and make sure to have some healthy balance when you can find it. But thank you for the updates. Okay, awesome. Next is, yeah, I'm sorry. Next is citizens comments. Do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak before the board?
This was only just kind of segueing on the positive stuff.
One second, can we get you a microphone? It's for the, here we go.
But a parent too, you know, because I'm here late in the evening. My, my, um, thank you goes to the teachers and and it's not just the school. I know it's other schools too, but there a handful of teachers that were here like late in the evening. I leave at ten thirty. And if their teacher's still here, I'm like, wow. But there are a lot of teachers who really care more than just, you know, doing a teacher's job is, and doing it well is not easy, but going to all the, you know, they don't get paid more if they stay late like me. But anyway, that's it. This day, I, can I say names? No? Okay, I won't. Don't do it, you're across from me.
Anybody online?
Um, no, there's no one online.
All right, well, they're missing out.
I know, maybe they'll watch later.
Superintendent report.
Thank you to your panel. I'll just reiterate the thanks of, you know, our staff from the studio to maintenance to getting the facilities ready, our office staff, our teachers and our support staff. And and really a special thanks to the people you see up here, our administrators who really made our in-service truly special. We had, Heather alluded to it, some, some amazing PD opportunities. We had some outside partners come and give PD opportunities and those were pretty good. But when our team provided the professional development, it just raised the standard. I mean, it just goes to show you how valuable and just how much our staff cares and it was just a really good way to kick off the year. Thank you for those that joined us on that Monday. Luke is with a guest speaker and it really just set the tone for the year. So really appreciate joining there. Now for my official report, in your packet, you have the ELL annual report. That's a requirement to share with you and not just for your review. And if you have come over that, you have any questions, I'll be, I can entertain those in a future meeting. Do want to mention out of state travel. Melissa Madison, our LFOA teacher is going to take a group to Nationals this year. It's in Indianapolis, it's in October, so that's always a fun trip for them. They did a major auction in the spring and so that's what, that's what those funds go to, is to be able to find those opportunities. You guys may have seen that last week's statewide economic forecast, it wasn't super favorable. We may have a report on that later on when we have the legislative report, but you know, close to a billion dollars being lost to our state with federal funding and and just the impact of that. There is some hope in some of those details. Our state does have a pretty healthy ending fund balance and some reserves that they could use, but there's triggers to be able to kick those, to be able to use those and especially for K twelve education. But we'll keep our board informed on how we can advocate to make sure that those deficits don't impact students' programs and staff. I did put, it's not directly related to us, but it is directly related to us. I put a letter from RVTD into your packets. You've probably have seen the signs that have been covered up already around the valley due to federal funding loss. They are having to cut routes. That impacts our students. We do have students that come from around the valley, whether on inter-district transfer. If they're MKB, which is a classified as homeless, we do bus them. But we do have students that take advantage of RV TD, especially Armadillo. They have a number of kids that take advantage. That's, that's going to impact them, which is really sad. There are some options. It's just not as convenient or as many routes to do. Speaking to the leaders of Armadillo, they have shared what the best option is for their students if they, if they use that bus service. Want to mention in the Culver Road Development of Fields, we crossed a big milestone last night again. Town City Council approved the vacation where that easement was up against the neighbors. And so you know, that had to be moved first before we triggered kind of the partition for the Boys and Girls Club. So we are on the right track to be able to continue to develop that property. Wanted to mention, and we're gonna, we've invited the leaders of the Southern Oregon Career Center, which is under the ESD. It's the new CTE center that was supposed to start this fall. They did have to cancel the program due to some available or ability to offer RCC credit as well. And it's just not worth it to our students if they're not being, getting the dual credit for RCC. So that's been postponed. We'll have an update from them at our day meeting in October at the high school and then the report to hear any more about the next plan of that. I want to share a little bit about enrollment. We are trending up and some of the schools mentioned that they are up in enrollment. Pretty much every school right now is showing up in enrollment. From last year, we are thirty three students up overall from last fall. From last spring, we're almost eighty students. So we'll know more once we start sifting down and making sure everybody that are on the rolls are showing up and tracking down those students that haven't shown up. We'll know more in the first of October on that. Finally, a quick in your, as Monday marks the fifth anniversary of the Almeida Fire, I put a letter in there that we mailed out today, actually, to donors that donated to either cash or gift cards or something to our, our district that directly went to all of our families. Just gave them an update of what PTS Rising is. What's happening in PTS Rising and how we're moving forward and, and really just highlighting that we still have a number of families that are in transitional housing. Sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind. If you're driving around in these communities, sees, oh, you're rebuilding, it's all great. We still have families that are impacted and we, we know that and we want to continue to serve our students and family in that regard. That's all I have. Thank you. Questions for Brent?
Appreciate the thorough report. Okay, consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda before we take action on it? I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm sure for the consent agenda that is presented.
Rebecca, thank you. Nancy, any objections? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to information and discussion, Legislative OSBA update.
My turn. So I think we, we talked about this earlier, that the OSBA annual conference is in November and Denise sent out some emails if you want to go. If anyone has any questions about it, you can ask now or you can ask later.
I'm curious, I haven't looked, but is the pre-session the topic announced?
I don't know, to tell you the truth, I haven't looked. I could ask.
I would love if you could.
Cause I, I think you might have an inside guy. And then the regional, we're having the regional conference at Ashland. The ESD is hosting that. Mark emailed me and all the superintendent and asking, because this year they're going to do a training, asking what kind of training they would they would like. The superintendent's offering the input. I put my input in. I have heard from many people in the valley, the school board members in the valley, that they want more training on advocating for policies. And so I asked for a policy one on one with them giving us how to get on OLIS, how to testify, how to do all of that. So that was my suggestion, but the superintendents could out save me. So we'll see.
That's your cue.
No, he knows. I let him know. And then also during that time, PACE will be down here most likely and that will be at the ESD. It's, it's the PACE training, which is our insurance for school insurance. And I'm on the board of PACE as well. They're gonna come down and do a training for admin and staff. But if it's something that a school board member would like to learn more about, they can come and learn about what PACE does. I like to go to see what, you know, sit on the faceboard to see what they're telling everybody. So it's kind of fun to, to see that. As you guys all probably know, there was a special session this weekend of ODOT. It has passed the House, but it has not passed the Senate. The Senate is on, I don't know what you want to call it, pause until September seventeenth. I sent an email out to the whole region about the hearing and as soon as I know more about when we can give input to the senators, I'll let you know. But right now it's kind of on pause until they decide to come back. So as Brett talked about, the revenue forecast wasn't great. It was act, I have, it was actually, we're doing numbers tonight. It was nine hundred fifty four point seven million, which is down two point four percent from when session ended, which was like the end of June. So it wasn't very wrong with the money drop. So COSA and OSBA are watching it very closely. We will probably have some calls to action and we'll keep you updated. I think that's it.
Questions for Dom? So things top of mind, we have to let Denise know by tomorrow for the OSBA registration. So if you haven't done that already, Denise, you, and then there was something else. Oh, RSVP, if you want to go to the regional thing.
Those two meetings.
Those two, yeah.
And I would recommend if you're not sure to RSVP and then to cancel it is easier than to add, especially the hotel rooms. If you're, want to stay, like adding a hotel room after everybody has added is a challenge and.
Well, it's not guaranteed that we are in the same hotel either.
Yeah, you might not be in a same hotel. You might be in a different hotel than the rest of us.
Very good. Committee reports, we have committee reports. It's the start of the school year, so I don't think we have anything to record. Rick, anything from the audit committee?
Superintendent goals. Yeah, thank you, your family.
Do you have?
Do you have some? Oh, go for it.
There will be.
I'm glad to hear that. It is a legal requirement. Yeah, thanks, Sheriff Campbell. I shared these with the board last meeting, but not everybody was in attendance. So these are my draft goals. They reflect really focused on the strategic plan and reviewed the evaluation from. um, really focused on the strategic plan and reviewed the evaluation from last year and um, added some uh, intentional goals in in that regard to um, improve outreach and communication and um, still work on our strategic plan goals. So if you have any questions on those, I'll, you have to entertain those or you can give me a call or email.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for the organizational chart. It's good to remember what some of you all do. Some of them are like holy smokes and this goes on and on and on. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. It's a good reminder for me.
Yeah, that was helpful too. Thank you. Um, okay, OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Don?
Okay, this, um, so there's, this is just information discussion. There is a spot open for LPC. It will be um, the, it will start January first through December. The board will can nominate a person, one person. And then once they're nominated, all the people that other boards have nominated to will go up and you can speak though, you'll be able to speak at the regional meeting and then each board will have a vote um, for that, if that makes sense. There I have had lots of people um, interested and since I am the acting president-elect, that's what I am, um, I get all the questions statewide, but I have had questions um, regionally as well. So, um, but and then the caveat, which I've been telling people is on September, I don't know, next week, not this weekend, but next weekend, we're having our board retreat, OSBA Board Retreat. And I will know if I am president then. If I am present, there will be a board and director seat opening um, at the first of the year as well. Yeah, so there might be two possible, there's gonna be two possible things. I'm ninety-nine percent sure I'm gonna be president, but we'll see.
Can't wait to hear that news officially.
Um, okay, uh.
You started a really great trend. Ninety-nine percent.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, budget committee applications. Do we have budget?
We don't, and so it's kind of a call to action to recruit um, some budget committee members and we um,
Reopenings.
Reopenings, um, and so we can recruit and also out to uh, the schools to put something out and Joe's been putting stuff out as well. Um, okay, yeah.
And just to clarify, Roland does want it and the other two have decided not to, which I haven't heard back from Roland.
Okay. Oh, so we haven't heard from him. Okay.
Yeah, but the other two do.
Good to know.
Anyone in contact with Roland?
I haven't talked in a year or so.
Okay.
We can try to pass the water down.
Yeah, yeah. Send me his number, I'll come. Um, okay. Speaking of which, budget calendar.
Yeah, um, this is uh, similar in nature uh, to the last budget calendar and a peer-reviewed uh, um, reaction.
Okay. Um, moving right along, boundary change.
Yes, um, I didn't mean to scare you on boundaries. But I just wanna kind of take us back up to two thousand nineteen when um, there's two people on the board at that time. Um, we were looking at boundaries for our elementary schools at that time because we know that just right across ninety-nine over here, um, that is actually Orchard Hill going towards Metford Orchard Hill, and that's quite a ways from Orchard Hill Elementary over in southeast Metford. So looking at doing a boundary change for that for Phoenix Elementary. That, we had listening sessions. I remember right over here, we had uh, pretty much a really good plan moving forward and then the uh, fires came, which uh, really decimated everything, as you know. Um, and we just don't know where that housing and where those boundary changes are gonna make sense. I just think it's too early to have that uh, kind of have that discussion until we see some more development. It always happens at the beginning of the year with our elementaries, especially between uh, Phoenix and Orchard Hill on on where do I attend school? Naturally, you'd think if you live less than a mile away here, then you would go to Phoenix Elementary, but technically that's our Orchard Hill boundary. So I just wanted to share that with you in case you hear uh, anything about um, some boundaries and and why um, you know, there's such a difference between distance between schools and where we have our residents, but I I do think with the developments that are happening, um, we might wanna talk about that next year at this time to see if we wanna start tackling that. That's the only uh, update I wanted to give on that.
We would probably wanna hold those listening sessions again.
Absolutely. I think we had a pretty good process when we did that. Uh, people were um, you know, attended and we just, we had a few of them and um, they had great input and we had um, some maps, our Janelle, our boss, Manamir was there as well, so.
And we let some people grant, we were gonna let some people grandfather in or have a process for that.
So it was kind of a slow, it wouldn't have an immediate impact. I mean, people could choose if they wanted to switch, but it would be just incoming kinder uh, at that time. So that would be the the challenge. We wouldn't just say, hey, you gotta go to a different.
Yeah. I remember there was something about, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Excellent. Um, next is ACCS discussion.
The Armadillo Charter, I guess it's not really a discussion. I just wanna remind you that Tiffany and I had our annual meeting with their leadership um, to to start the year. It was a good discussion, uh, talking about goals, but we also have site visits for our board typically in the fall. And so we will uh, get some dates that work for them, uh, maybe a couple of them because I know people are uh, busy and and um, we'll get some tours to be able to go. They've done some upgrades over there. If you haven't been over there in a few years. Um, so it'd be great there. There are the charter that's under this umbrella and um, we'll get some dates and I'll send those invites out to the board to see if they wanna do a walk through.
Good stuff. Um, I predict the action items will go quite quickly. Do we wanna just proceed or would we like to take a recess? Okay. Um, first action item is establishing meal prices. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve that increase in adult meal prices as presented. I'll start now.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion?
I have a good question. Is Amy still here?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, Amy. I'm gonna over here. Um, can adults add funds to an account?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so we just need to, if you're not a teacher
Right.
um, in the district already with a student, with a teacher ID.
Yeah.
Then we just need to make an ID, an account for you first.
Okay.
And then you can go online on mealtime and you can add funds with a credit card.
Nice. Is that a classified staff too?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, uh, any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yep.
I vote yes. Board guiding principles.
If you remember, uh, we had a really great discussion about these at these uh, meeting in the summer. And um, we had a chance to look at these last time. Not everybody was here, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to review them. Um, we do have to decide on, help me out with where we're at, what we're gonna decide.
So yeah, red language was the uh, what we deciphered from that discussion. Well, you didn't call it a retreat, by the way.
Yeah.
Uh, that we deciphered and then there's some options on the highlighted areas. Uh, so that first one on the first page, we could combine the two bullet points above there and use that one or keep the modified uh, versions of both those above bullet points. And the other one was, um, just another suggestion for that above uh, point on the second page.
Okay, so I would ask if anyone's interested in making a motion, just include in your motion, but just for clarity, those highlighted sections are talking about the, so the, on the first page, that highlighted paragraph is a possibility of combining the two bullet points above that into one. That's an option. And then the next page has that highlighted section for the bullet point above that. So I would suggest if you would like, anyone would like to make a motion, just to include whether you'd like to utilize those highlighted paragraphs or just um, approve the principles as um, as laid out without the highlighters.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
So if we, if we make the motion and I feel like making a motion and then us discussing it and then we would have to maybe not pass that motion. So I'm wondering if that makes it a little messy. I know we do just, we do it that way, but on this situation, I'm wondering if that might be a little messy.
Yeah, I mean, so why don't we do this? Why don't someone make a motion to pass the guiding principles? We can have this, we would just have to clarify which version of the principles we wanna pass. So.
And we can't discuss it.
We can discuss it, absolutely. We're just
With the motion?
We would just have to make, we just have to know what we're voting on.
Okay.
So.
I move to approve changes to our board guiding principles as discussed. Keeping the bullet points as they are rather than combining them. I think it gets awkward and too wordy.
Okay, there you go.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Thank you, Rick. Okay, now we have something to discuss. And if we wanna change that, we can make a new motion.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to clarify it.
Yeah, I actually I support the motion.
I do too.
I like the bullet point separated. So does anyone have any counter arguments to that? Hey, well, that was easy. I was a little nervous and I was gonna lie about how quick the action item. You, okay. You said it was gonna be fast. Okay, we will vote then. Nancy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Thank you for making that easy, Diana.
Yes.
So we good on that?
Yeah.
No highlighted this. Okay, appreciate the effort though. Um, okay. Resolution twenty-five eleven, Community Renewable Energy Grant. Just another opportunity. We've been successful with these grants, um, with the solar in Town Elementary and Town uh, Middle School. And so this is another opportunity with this grant coming up to do PES and expand on what we have and use battery for PHS as well. Very exciting. Glad motion.
I'll make that motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-five eleven, approving a community renewable energy grant applications for PES and PHS as presented.
I'll say it.
Replace us. Okay, thank you, Diana. Thank you, Polly. I was gonna have to go to Erin there real quick.
Faster. Any further discussion on this? I don't think he's here. I just wanna express my appreciation for John and um,
Yeah.
this, you know, the, he's just the project maestro and um, our district is better for it with our infrastructure. So thank you to John and team and Brent for uh, supporting Nash. Okay, uh, any more discussions?
I would like to say thank you to Denise for all she does for us every day, every time. And as we start this journey in this school year, I just wanna give her extra love and thanks for all she does. So.
Still have to vote on this. So, uh, Nancy?
I was pretty. We're voting on the solar?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick, solar. Did you vote yes, Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, great.
One, two, three, yes.
Okay, Don?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Um, that's okay. I was like, is this specific? Okay, uh, the next, the next meeting agenda is there for your review. So if you have any questions, please. Just to note, it does say program report for Southern Oregon Career Center. That's gonna actually be the the second meeting in a program, a day meeting. So that was that over. So thank you for that clarification. Awesome. Clear journey.